Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on this Monday, November 6th of 2023. If you would be so kind as to mute your cellphones, but if they happen to go off, we'll just stop and let you answer it. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we give thanks for this day. We ask for the blessing upon this body as we carry out the business of the county of Lee. We ask for peace in this world as we see the things that are going about and the evil that we see on a daily basis. We ask for that to be suppressed and bring forth the goodness in all of us. For that, we say, "Thank you," and God bless in your most holy and precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda in front of you. Is there anything additional to add to the agenda? Any changes to the agenda?
Without objection, I would move 5A, the cost analysis on implementation of microchipping to consent agenda.
Motion's been made to move the cost analysis of the implementation of microchipping services at the Lee County Animal Shelter, item 5A, to consent agenda.
Can we also move 5B? I think those are just state mandated guideline changes.
Add to move 5B to the consent agenda. Any other additions or modifications of the agenda? Motion's been made to move the 5A and 5B from new business to the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. For public comments, as the next item on the agenda, we have two individuals. And just a reminder, if you would please approach the podium and state your name, address as well. And William Hall, Dr. Hall. Are the two of you going to do this together?
We're going to dance together.
It's allowed.
I was going to read my prepared remarks, except I went to the eye doctor this afternoon, and my eyes are dilated, so she can prescribe if that's okay with you. Later on, in your consent agenda, you're talking about harm reduction. We have, I have some comments about what it is and how it fits into Lee County Sanford.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to speak about harm reduction. And I'm sure you've all done a little bit of research about it already. But the definition is that it's the philosophy of assisting a person to make any positive change. So harmful reduction is almost everything done as a physician. And in society, we do a lot of harm reduction, like wearing seat belts, using helmets, getting our flu shots, safe sex practices, using condoms, having our children immunized and also other vaccines. Multiple studies have shown that harm reduction philosophy does not increase dangerous behavior. For example, wearing seat belts doesn't mean we look to be involved in an accident. Using condoms has not increased promiscuous sexual behavior. Harm reduction in this evening's discussion involves its use in substance use disorders. In substance use, that includes the use of opiates, including fentanyl, heroin, oxycodin stimulants, including crack and cocaine, alcohol and tobacco. And they're going to continue without harm reduction strategies. But harm reduction strategies reduce the risk of disease, hepatitis B and C, HIV, blood and skin infections, and death. There are several misconceptions concerning substance use disorders. Not all those who use drugs become addicted, only 10% to 20%. Substance use is a chronic disease, not a moral failing. Addiction is not a criminal legal problem. It's a public health concern. Appropriate response to drug use and addiction should be support and treatment evidence-based. So substance use is not a synonym for addiction. It's not a criminal event, but a chronic disease. A substance use disorder is a condition defined by one's behavior and includes compulsiveness, cravings, and continued use despite negative effects. So harm reduction starts with a change in our thinking, in our vocabulary. Without changes, we can't expect to build relationships with substance abusers. Without relationships, we can't help and reduce the harm of substance use. Building a relationship starts with respect. The goals of harm reduction are having the patient return for follow-up visits, having substance users become non-users, safer use of needles and syringes, avoiding discarded needles in public places, preventing infectious diseases, preventing accidental overdoses, and preventing overdose deaths. So harm reduction also includes substance use disorder counseling, needle exchange, which you voted on, fentanyl test strips for the user, Narcan. And as a member of the Board of Health, Dr. Hall would like to say that as a physician providing medical care to the homeless and the uninsured, he is confronted daily with substance use disorders and substance users. He urges you, the commissioners, to approve harm reduction components to make Sanford and Lee County not only safer, but also a leader in harm reduction. So thank you for your vote, which you just took.
Thank you very much.
Kirk, do you need them to state their name and address?
I'm sorry.
Do you need them to state their name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Hall, could you please just state your name and address?
If you could find a microphone.
I'm Dr. William Hall. My address is 1202 Wilkins, as is hers, Sanford.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next item on the agenda is old business, the multi-sports complex naming options. And Ben, please. Ben McCreary.
Good evening, commissioners. Hope you're all doing well tonight. Tonight, I bring to you some options to name the upcoming Lee County Multi-Sports Complex. The reason we are bringing you these options tonight is the desire to have a name in place for the groundbreaking so that we could possibly have promotional materials available for that. And I'm going to read from my summary that it should be in all of you all's packets. Miss Give Ahead, so the first step in creating a great name is to define our target patrons for the park. Intended to be a regional sporting facility capable of hosting both county sports programming and also larger tournaments that are capable of hosting regional families and sports participants. We need an easily recognizable name that's based in regionality that will best capture this target demographic. The next step is to seek input from stakeholders on what themes are desired, not just for the naming, but for the overall impact of this new park. And the last step is to create options and make sure they sound good out loud and to make sure they look good on paper and can be condensed into an easy acronym. So to capture the stakeholders, from October 11th through October 27th, we had a forum open to the public that we pushed out on social media and through the news. We received 183 responses and over 300 individual name submissions. Very common themes that were throughout the submissions were things centered around regionality, such as bricks, or the rivers, or pine trees, things like that. Recognizability, Central Carolina, Lee County, Sanford, et cetera. And then also a lot of recognitions of Lee County's sporting legacy. We had a lot of submissions of coaches' names. Due to our adopted naming policy, we will not be able to move forward with any specific name, but we do hope to incorporate coaches and other important figures in this new park. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board does want to capture the impact that this sports complex will have on the future of athletics. And a sample and suggested name is included that is one of their suggested names. So the three suggested names tonight are Central Carolina Athletic Park, the Brickyard Athletic Park, and Legacy Athletic Park. All three of these were, in some form or another, suggested via our forum, and we were able to whittle it down to those. Our staff recommendation is to move forward with Central Carolina Athletic Park. Central Carolina is obviously a very common theme throughout a lot of businesses and nonprofits and other organizations throughout Lee County. It reduces into a nice acronym of CCAP, and it would be very recognizable for Lee County residents and for residents in surrounding areas. The Brickyard Athletic Park is based in our heritage of brickmaking. And lastly, the Legacy Athletic Park captures some of those futures and legacy theming that the Parks Board and many other people did submit into the online forum. In an effort to possibly capture some of those desires, we are also recommending a tagline to accompany this new park, which our staff recommendation would be Sporting Legacies, Lasting Memories, Built Brick by Brick. We hope that that would be a fun way to capture some of that. So tonight, we would hope that you would be able to vote on a recommended name or feel free to have any other suggestions. But that's all I have, so please let me know if you have questions.
Questions for Ben. Commissioner Carver.
None, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick.
None for Ben. Commissioner Sharp, I'd like to ask what the Parks and Rec Board, are they the ones that also recommend the Central Carolina?
We sent some names over. We got the director over here, Joseph. We sent, what did we send, three over? Yeah, and I can't remember what they were. He might have them written down, I'm not sure. But, but none of these are, anyway. I'm correct about that, right, Joseph? None of these are anything we sent over, right?
Except for the, except for the legacies.
Yeah, number three, yeah. Okay.
No thanks, thank you.
Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck.
I just wanted to say, thanks for the work you guys put in. I liked the change from the sports complex to the athletic park and the idea behind that. And I was curious if Lee County Athletic Park might have come up in discussion.
That would be an option that is available. We wanted to try to have something maybe a little bit more unique, but that is certainly something that if that is your desire, we could do that. On the sign, we would make sure that it said, "Lee County Government", nice and big on the sign. They would know that it's a Lee County government facility for sure. But if it's your desire to do a Lee County Athletic Park, that's something you could do.
I would just say, my only concern with the Central Carolina is we are, like you had said, a lot of the businesses around here are, start with that. And we might lose the identity of what we're trying to do with the athletic park and trying to make a name for Lee County and what we're bringing to the area. And this would be a good kind of catapult to bring Lee County to the forefront instead of kind of putting it in the background. But just my thought. But thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Reeves.
I like calling it what it is, Lee County Multi-Sports Complex.
Okay. Commissioner Sharp.
Like I said, we discussed this at length in our meeting, and a lot of people were talking about Central Carolina is attached to a lot of things here in Lee County. And, you know, we were kind of looking for something more original. Not that Lee County Athletic Park is anything original, but at least it keeps the name of our county in the, in the name. So I would, I would recommend Lee County Athletic Park.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion's been made to identify.
I didn't hear the whole. Lee County Athletic Park.
Thank you. That sounds great.
Ilka.
Motion, motion's been made to call the multi-sports complex, the Lee County Athletic Park. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you got it, Ben.
Would you be interested in adopting a tagline tonight?
Tagline discussion. Commissioner Sharp.
I don't prefer any one of these over the other. I'm pretty much agreeable to what the rest of the commissioners decide.
Commissioner Reeves.
One, number one.
Number one, Commissioner Reeves. Is that a motion, sir?
Yes.
Motion's been made to go with tagline number one.
I think that encompasses a lot of, sorry, I'm speaking out of line.
Commissioner Vorbeck.
I was just going to say, I think that does, I kind of in agreeance with that as it kind of does at least bring in some of the input from the citizens, the Parks and Rec Board, and allows kind of, it's an all-encompassing tagline, if we're going to go with one.
Commissioner Connect.
Yeah, well, Miss Fine, I think the park is good because there's more than just sports that's going to be, that's going to be there, right? There's going to be walking trails and other activities.
Correct.
So I think that's, that's appropriate. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick.
No comments, I'm ready.
Commissioner Carver.
Sounds good to me.
Motion's been made to go with tagline number one, Sporting Legacies, Lasting Memories, Built Brick by Brick, quote unquote. Staff recommendation, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We would like to tell you that we tend to have a date of December 8th planned for the groundbreaking. We will keep you all abreast of that to make sure everything's moving in accordance with that, but that's what we're going with right now. We are not sure of the time exactly yet.
Time for the afternoon, just coordinating with the school schedules. Definitely get people.
So go ahead and mark your calendars tendatively for December 8th in the afternoon.
It's a Friday.
Yes, Friday.
Okay. Friday, December 8th, tentative, tentative. Okay, moving right along. Managers' report, financial report. Candace, this is the fastest you've been up here.
Good evening. Tonight, I have for you the September monthly financial report. Tax collections as a percentage of the budget are at 18.68%, which is slightly higher than the same period last fiscal year. At this point in time, the percentage used for expenditures should be about 25%. A few of our departments are ahead of that target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. But if you exclude encumbrances, only one department remains over budget. That is IT, and that is due to the payment of annual maintenance agreements.
Any questions, or Candace? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbeck? Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Carver? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Comments. We'll start with Commissioner Carver.
Yes, I just want to report that I went to the board meeting of the Central Pines Regional Council recently, used to be Triangle J. And it was a really interesting meeting. We spent an equal amount of time between two issues. One was a discussion of Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Annual Interim Report. And basically, that's an organization that's housed within Central Pines and looks at different issues that will help member communities increase their economic development. I talked a little bit to Jimmy about the interface between Saga and them and came up with some interesting opportunities, maybe, to have this organization or this, the people that are involved in it, come and talk about federal trade zones. That's one of the things that they might be interested in. So we'll see. It just highlights some of the efforts that Central Pines makes to try to make our job easier. The other one, which was interesting, was a woman by the name of Leslie Mazingo, who is a member of Strategies Consulting. And basically, she's a lobbyist for us in Washington. Didn't know that that was something that went on. But they, she represents, among other people, Central Pines Regional Council in Washington. And her advice had a lot to do with funding issues and the climate in Washington. And in particular, the concern that, obviously, due to our financial constraints, the opportunities for funding are going to be closing here in the near future. However, right now, there are two issues available. One through the bipartisan infrastructure law and the other through the Inflation Reduction Act, which are about $1.2 trillion. Those were originally five-year plans, and we're coming up on the end of the second year. Her counsel to us was, "Don't think that because we're two years into it that you're missing out on opportunities." As a matter of fact, she said, "There's a lot of concern on the part of people administering that program that, that local governments need to be represented more effectively and that all the money doesn't necessarily need to be distributed through the state." So in our conversations, they're ongoing and certainly going to be in our retreat here coming up, I'm hoping that we can pay close attention to the idea of forming that position that will allow us to take advantage of it. The only other comment that I would make is, you may not realize it, but we spend $13,000 a year on Central Pines. That's our membership fee. And obviously, to glean from them, we have to somehow talk to them in a way that indicates our interest and gets them working for us. They already do several things for us. But this is an area that maybe we could develop as we've talked about in the past. So it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Lovick.
Yes, I had several of us attended the Veterans Dinner the other night. It was very nice. I'd like to thank all the veterans with that coming up and announced that the, and you may be taking part of yours, Commissioner Smith, on Veterans Day at Broadway this Saturday, 11th, at 11:00 a.m. Am I right on that? I'd like the folks to come out there and honor our veterans and thank you so much, veterans and the ones that are now serving. Also, I'd like to thank, and I don't know why this hadn't ever been in my mind in a while, our volunteer firefighters. You know, they do so much. I started in 1982 in the volunteer service, and they do so much more than I did back in those days, from emergency calls to extrication during vehicle wrecks and things like that. And they're not paid. They do have some paid staff during the day, but especially at night, zero pay. So I just wanted to pay tribute to them and thank them so much for their service. And this county couldn't do without them. So thank you.
Commissioner Connect.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck.
I just wanted to thank the public for their input with the amount of names that did come in. And even though we went on a different route, I think there's going to be opportunities to celebrate and honor the coaches and the mentors and stuff. I know there was a lot mentioned in there on the comments and stuff. And I look forward to the groundbreaking and building this thing.
Commissioner Reeves.
I'd just like to acknowledge East Lee School Principal, Robert Newby, for becoming Principal of the Year. And to thank the interim school superintendent for his support in that endeavor. But also wish him the best as an applicant for the superintendent's job. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm excited about the, the naming of the complex and the tagline and looking forward to the December 8th groundbreaking. It's been a long time coming. Thank you to all the people in the public, Parks and Rec Board, and you guys for trying to sort this name out, you know. Whatever name it was going to be, I was going to be happy with it just so, we just need to move forward. And I'm glad, glad of all that.
Thank you. I would like to extend my congratulations to Beth Kelly and Victor Zar for being identified as city assistant city managers now. I think they're modeling their governance by ours, which is always good to lead the way. Just a reminder, this week is Operation Green Light. For those that are participating, Operation Green Light is to recognize veterans and those active-duty members who will be transitioning to become veterans, that we are aware of you and we appreciate your service. On the 10th anniversary of the Veterans Treatment Court is on Wednesday in Lillington. And the Veterans Treatment Court is designed to divert veterans who have run into issues with substance abuse, alcohol, and so forth, and interacting with the law. And it's a program that's designed to steer them correctly. But the 10th anniversary will be on Wednesday at the Hornet Courthouse at 1:30 in Courtroom 6. As of 1 December 2023, according to the Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services, Secretary Kinsley has basically dissolved the Sandhill Center. So the Sandhill's Mental Health Center will no longer be. We will be aligned with East Point. Three counties have been separated. Hornet County is going to Alliance. Rockingham County is going to Vaya. And Davidson County is going to Partners. So they've separated those three counties from Sandhill's, and the rest of the counties will be aligned with East Point. And then eventually, we're going to be merged with Trillium out of Wilmington. So changes are coming in our mental health system within the central North Carolina.
Did you say Wilmington?
Yes, that's where Trillium is located, near Wilmington. Election Day is tomorrow. If you're a resident of Sanford and Broadway, my granddaughter was texting me, "What are we voting for tomorrow?" And I asked her, "Did you live in Sanford, or do you live in Broadway?" She lives in neither. So she now knows. And of course, Saturday, Veterans Day at 11:00 at the North Carolina Veterans Memorial will be the ceremony. If you are available to attend, very nice. Hopefully, it won't be raining, but it will be on the 11th, at 11:00, on the 11th month, the 11th hour of the 11th day. That's when the armistice was, World War I. Without further ado.
Can I ask one question about the Sandhill situation? If Rockingham is no longer in our group, does that mean we can't use those facilities there that we use?
Good question. You're talking about Rockingham in, what is that county? Richmond South, Richmond County. That facility is still under the auspices of Sandhill's. We'll have to work that out. I can get back to you after next week's board meeting. But that's a good question. We have quite a few, I want to say, behavioral health emergency facilities that we can divert individuals from emergency rooms. But I found out we have five individuals waiting for placement in our local hospital as we speak. Hopefully, a couple of them got placed today. But, yeah, it's dictates of the Department of Health and Human Services Secretary that being what it is. Any other questions? Without further ado, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I believe the record we had to beat was six minutes and, or six, excuse me, 21 minutes, that's what we had. That's what we had, if I recall. 21 minutes.